He's a, he's Mexican.
Yeah.
But he's got a.
Yeah. That'd be nice to me, bro.
I'm probably. Probably see him in some people there.
He's a, looks like brown. Where?
Um. Hey, that's good. Where? Look like brown, he's young, right? On that one picture. Maybe I'm just. Like a nine. That could be, I hope. I mean, I made the.
We have time to talk? Okay.
We're gonna go ahead and get the council study session for Tuesday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five started at six P M. New business, new business. We're gonna move on to old business, discussion on the approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen, authorizing the mayor to con- contract arrow roofing for the re-roofing of the Mapton Police Department building located at three oh seven Main Street. So, um, we talked about that at the last meeting. So, uh, we already got you all made up your mind on who we're gonna go with. So, um, but we go to our six thirty meeting, we just need the approval for that. Okay? Any questions? Diane?
No, I don't have any.
Mary? No.
Mary?
No.
Chief, any questions? That's your building. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and go to B, discussion on the approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen, an agreement, uh, an agreement with Yakima Document Solutions for the printer services. So that also was brought to you at the last meeting. And that was with, um, Zen- Zen- Zenox?
Yeah.
Zip, is it Lex? I'm sorry. Yes, I brought it down. So, um, we talked about that, y'all approved it. So, um, that's who we'll be going with. So if you have any questions, Diane?
I don't. That's who we did approve with.
You guys, um, that was the bid.
Well, we haven't received the actual contract. We'll bring it to the next council meetings.
Okay. All right. So we haven't received the actual contract. So it'll be brought to the next meeting. Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and go. Mary, do you have any questions?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Mary? Uh, we're gonna go ahead and go on to C, discussion on the approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen, an amendment to the contract with Yakima Waste Systems. And, um, we did have someone here at the last meeting. And I don't know if he's online. He's not. So, we're gonna go ahead and, um, go ahead and stay with Yakima Waste. So if we have any questions, Diane?
Yeah.
Mary?
No.
No.
Nothing.
Arturo? No.
Okay. We're going on to D, discussion on the approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen, authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Yakima Valley Conferences of Government. So we need to amend, uh, number one, in the amount of ten thousand. So, um, we have already exhausted our, um, budget for Y B C O G. So we need to amend it for ten thousand, uh, for the remaining of the year. And, uh, the reason we've exhausted, um, the money for them is we have a lot of projects going on. So, um, we have been using them quite a bit. So, do we have any questions, Diane?
No.
Mary?
What page is that on?
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Uh, I thought I had it ready. Thanks, Arturo.
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay. Ready? So we're gonna go ahead and go on to E, discussion and review of bids for the installation of underground sprinklers at Governor's Park in the west section. So yeah, if you've got a separate packet, we did get, um, the first one is gonna be Evergreen Services. So we did get three bids and, um, the first bid, as you can see there, is a sixty-two thousand two hundred and eight. And that includes, um, our materials, labor and equipment and, um, prevailing wage. And then if you go on to the second one, Dominion Landscape Professional. He quoted us forty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-five with sixty-eight.
I believe Dominion's might be a little bit off. I was taking a look at their numbers for Dominion. And he rated us at a eight percent city tax, uh, which doesn't match up to the final numbers. I think that might be a little bit higher than what they're actually estimating us there.
Okay. So it is a little bit higher?
Yes, once they actually correct the tax on there, it's stating that's one thousand one hundred, uh, and some change at an eight percent for the forty-eight thousand. Uh, that's way too low for being the actual eight percent. That's more at like four percent.
Okay. So, um, then if you go to the last page, we have premier property maintenance in construction. And, uh, they quoted us at forty-eight. Is that right?
Yeah, so the actual job itself is gonna be forty-four thousand. After that's forty.
Yeah, forty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-nine with seventy cents. So, um, you all know how hard I've been trying to get that park up and going. We had put it off for a while because we thought we were gonna be able to get our splash pad there, but unfortunately it didn't go through. So our next move is to get the sprinklers in. And, um, you know, hopefully we can approve it tonight. This week we'll back and do the splash pad. That was the main reason we wanted the splash pad, to cut costs on the sprinkler system itself. You know? So, um, those are our bids. So if you have any questions, let me know. Diane?
I don't have any.
Mary?
No, I don't have any. No question, and nobody cares, so.
I care.
I care.
I want that. I want the splash pad.
So did I.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, we have a council that think that we need our kids need a death there, so.
Yes.
So, um.
You said no. You know what? You didn't come in, Chris.
Oh, okay, so, um, do you all wanna come to an agreement on one of these?
There's a lot, there's like ten thousand. All of the different.
Yeah. Hello, Jim? Who's our last one? Okay, so, um, the last sprinklers, uh, sprinklers that were installed, um, on the other side was by Dominion. And they are the second.
Second bid.
The second bid.
The second bid.
Uh-huh. Uh, they did the first, um, sprinklers for us.
Was there that one about the same business?
Uh, no, I think it was a little less, but he said everything has gone up. But, you know, um, I, I was able to meet with one of them this morning and they were really trying to work with the city. You know, so it's, I told them this is all gonna be up to council. So if you guys can let me know, talk about it, discussion. The sooner the better. Someone can.
Keep flying up if we don't hurry up then.
Exactly. And it just, it's an eyesore on that highway. So once we can get, you know, some stuff out there, the brass planted and a couple of picnic tables should be looking at. And I think, you said the middle one was gonna go down a little bit?
No, that's actually gonna go up. I just ran the numbers. And once it's corrected to the actual eight percent, we're looking at fifty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven estimate. So that, that middle one's actually gonna go up quite a little bit, just because, uh, they rushed the numbers over to us a little bit and so that one thousand is incorrect. Thousand one hundred for taxes at any percent.
Fifty-two thousand what?
Five hundred.
What did you say, fifty-two thousand what?
Um, I'm, I estimated it at fifty-two thousand, uh, five hundred and seventy-seven for Dominion after the eight percent correct tax bracket.
We decided that.
Yeah, I guess. We need to get moving on this. Hi, Jamin.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jamin, how are you?
I'm doing well. I, uh, thank, thank, thank you for, uh, your understanding and, and attending virtually tonight. I've been home sick, kinda working part-time from home the last couple of days and trying not to share, uh, share our bug that we have in our house right now, so. I can barely hear you guys, so I'm sorry if I answer the wrong question. And you know why.
Hey, maybe you can show us your little one.
Uh, we'll see. He will probably run by here. Um, you know, I usually try to mute it. Sometimes he has some very loud commentary on any meetings that I'm, I'm, I'm doing. Um, so, so I'm, I'm mainly here, here tonight to give you guys an update on the well seven project. Um, so cou- couple up, recent updates. So if you remember, I think it was last year, council approved a change order to do more test wells. You drilled an initial well, it, it was unsuccessful. So he said, before we spend the money on another production well, let's drill a test well. So we drilled a test well, it was unsuccessful. At that point, the city had to look for new locations, looking more to the northeast part of town. Um, recently, the city's been successful in obtaining permission to drill a test well on the property behind the elementary school. There's a developer that's working on that property and wanted to work with the city and gave the city permission to drill a test well, with the understanding that if it's successful, I think that, you know, the city will need to enter into negotiations to potentially either purchase a piece of land from them or from someone nearby, you know, that, that, they could drill a production well on. Right, but the first step is to drill the test well. If, and confirm that, that aquifer is, is productive. Um, it, it, that, that the aquifer is productive in that location. If that's the case, the next step is to acquire property in that area and drill a production well and equip it and put it in your system. Um, so that's on track. The driller, we gave them the go-ahead to drill the test well there. They put us on the schedule for late July, early August, and they'll let us know as it gets closer, um, wh- when that will be. Um, but, but we're, we're in line. This is the way it works with well drilling. Well drillers, you just, they put you on the schedule whenever they, whenever, whenever they're booked to and then they get to you when they get to you. Um, so, we don't yet know if that will be successful. You know, hopefully it will, but we don't yet know. However, there are some funding opportunities available to the city. Um, i- i- if that test well is successful, the city will need some additional funding to be able to finish the project. The original, the city originally had a package of C D B G funds, which are grant, U S D A R D funds that were two-thirds loan, one-third grant, um, and some county A R P A money, um, that was grant. Uh, because of the, the, the length that this project has taken, um, and, and a few different reasons, R D, which was the, the loan, the primarily loan package, they pulled their funding last year from the city, um, and, and took that away. So for the city to finish the project, you still have some C D B G funds to drill this test well with. Um, but if the test well is successful and you wanna go with the rest of the project, you will need some additional funding. Um, there's a funding, uh, opportunity right now called Public Works Board Funding. Um, for the city, it will, it would likely, if the city was successful obtaining it, would likely be fifty percent loan, fifty percent grant. Uh, and, and that's a low interest, you know, one, one and a half percent loan, um, a- a- and the other fifty percent grant. Not all cities are eligible for that, but, but the, the Mapton would be eligible for that. Um, and so as long as the grant funds were there, you, you would get up to fifty percent grant, um, for, for this project. Um, the other part, like I said, is a low-interest loan and you'd have to pay it back. Um, so in talking to the mayor and staff, you know, this is, this is a great opportunity. Um, this funding didn't used to have a grant, and I don't know that it will always have grants, so it's kind of a strike while the iron is hot. Um, this is an opportunity for the city to apply for the funds needed to finish that project now. Ideally, the test well would be done, and you would already know, so you would know applying whether that was gonna be successful. Uh, but unfortunately, just due to the driller's schedule, we don't know that yet. So, um, you know, our, our recommendation is to apply for this Public Works Board Funding, um, in an amount, uh, needed to, to finish the project, um, to, to, in conjunction with the other funding that you have available. Um, the funding apps are due in August, um, and you'd find out in October. Um, so that's, that's kinda question one is, you know, we recommend applying, but you, you know, we'll look, look for, look for the blood, you know, blood council blessing to proceed with applying for this funding package. Question two is, uh, you know, a, a little more nuanced. So if you remember that the original project was well seven. Um, when it looked like the aquifer wasn't gonna be as productive as we'd hoped, we tried to squeeze in a well eight and try to do well seven and eight. Um, obviously that hasn't happened either, right? And so, at this point, we only have one additional location for a test well and, and, and no procured property to drill it on. And so, if we write this Public Works Board Funding application, we can dig it two ways. We can look to just get a well seven online. And, and even if it isn't what we'd originally hoped, it still helps a lot. Um, or we can write it to do well seven and a well eight at, at a future two-to-be-determined location, assuming the test well is successful. Um, both of those are valid approaches. Um, I would, uh, you know, and, and I wrote, I wrote, uh, you know, in, in my email to the mayor and, and city staff about this, my recommendation would be towards just applying for well seven at this time, um, for a couple of reasons. One, the funding package would be a lot larger. If you're trying to do two wells versus one, that funding package is gonna be a lot larger, which means a larger loan that the city would essentially have to repay. Even though it's fifty percent grant, you still have to pay back the other fifty percent. Additionally, because we're not really sure about well seven yet, because the test well isn't done, um, well eight is even more speculative. The, the funding app's a little bit speculative, um, and that may, that may make it rate a little bit more poorly. Um, but if you add a well eight that's even more speculative, it may pull the rating down of the overall project. And at this point, I'd rather get you the, get you the funding for well seven, get that secured, get that project done. Um, if, you know, moving forward, if, if that's the approach you took, you'd get your well seven funding. If everything's great with the test well, there's nothing to stop you from immediately turning around, looking for additional property in the northeast part of town, and additional funding to do a well eight. Right, that has nothing to stop you from doing that. Um, the, the concern is, you know, the, the, the argument, uh, for only applying for well seven right now is that if you apply for, for well seven and eight right now, it could make it, the application too large and speculative enough that they might not give you any funding. Um, the disadvantage to that approach is if well seven, the test well is great, and well seven is stupendous and it's all online, it'd be nice to already have the funding in place to go ahead and do another well. Um, but, but that is, that is speculative. There's some ifs, the kinda ifs in that, um, in that approach. Um, and so ultimately, I, you know, I, I kinda summarized this in an email to council or to, to mayor and staff, um, and they wanted to bring it to you guys for, for discussion. Um, I'm just going back to my, my notes on this to make sure I kind of covered the, the pros and cons. Um, you know, both are, are defendable approaches. Um, you know, there's, there's risk. The risk and upside both, both ways. Um, Public Works Board Funding, they typically come out for funding once or twice a year. Um, I don't know that they will always offer grant like they are now, but, but typically, you know, one to two times a year that this funding package opens, depending on, on, you know, the funding they have available. Um, if the city doesn't receive this, if we apply, the city doesn't receive this, there are other funders that we could potentially talk to as well. Um, this is just the current, this is the current opportunity. So, um, you know, that's why we have to decide on this one.
Thank you, Jamin. Diane, do you have any questions?
Mary?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you, Jamin.
Uh, it, do you have any, um, council have preference of, of which approach we take? I, I guess number one, should we apply for funding? And number two, you know, do you wanna apply for well seven or well seven and eight?
I say well seven. I, I say well seven only right now, at this, at this time. I don't know.
Sure.
Um, now, what do you think?
Just one well, well seven. We fight for both and we'll get it. I think just one. Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, uh, this time, just well seven, Jamin.
Okay. Thank you. That, that's, that's good direction and I think, I think it gets you a better chance of getting funded. So.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else, um, that you need from me?
Nope.
Happy to, happy to give updates on anything else.
Do you have anything to add? Do you have anything to add?
Um, I don't think so. That's kinda the city's current outstanding, uh, you know, project. I, I emailed, uh, you and Mari earlier about C D B G funding that's, that, you know, sounds like they have money. Um, it's very competitive and, and, and so, you know, Mari sent back some, some options based on kind of city's previous desires. We'll run that past the funders and just see. Um, the nice part with that funding, it's very competitive, it's hard to get. Um, but the, the staff will sometimes give you kind of a preliminary thumbs up before you put the work into a funding app. So we can run some of the city's, you know, a few options, right? Pass them initially and they'll kinda tell us, yeah, don't apply for that, don't apply to that, that might work. Um, and we'll just, we'll just see what they'll entertain. Um, that is grant funding. And so, that could be potentially funding. They don't really wanna fund water or sewer, so it's potentially funding for other kind of facilities, community facilities. And so we'll just, we'll just see where that goes. Um, you know, and, and see what, see what they say. Um, other than that, I don't think I have any other updates, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I think that's everything, Jim. I think that's everything. Okay, thank you, Jamin.
Right, thank you, guys. See you all. Take care. You next time.
Okay, so, um, let's go back to the, um, water packet to see what y'all decide on, on this. One for the sprinkler system. Yeah, but, you know, do you guys have any more questions on it?
Oh, okay.
No.
Okay. All right, so, um, we already talked, um, oh, okay. So I wanna go ahead and go on to, um, F, Discussion of twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, um, your resolution of the city of Mapton implementing a spending freeze effective immediately. So, um, do you girls wanna add to this? Sophie and Mike?
I believe that the last council, um, council wanted to talk about it again, so. I'd begin there, so.
We actually need to hear what you guys' opinion is. How's it going in these hours?
We're talking about the freeze right now.
Um. Give me some money.
So, um, apparently it's come to my attention that we're always spending money and we are not spending on things that, you know, are not needed. I know we're spending on office supplies, um, the regular stuff that you would need when you're in an office. You know? Um, other than that, I don't know what else you guys think that we're spending on, that we need to quit spending on. So if you guys can let me know, that'd be nice. Diane?
I think you're fine.
Mary?
Well, the only thing I had concerns were the gas. It's, and it's looking way, way better for me. And all the receipts are there. That's the most important, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're within what we need to get for the city, for the police department. Um, I know, um, that if there is something that we need, we're gonna get it, you know, we're not gonna wait two weeks to bring it to council.
You know, what is the spending that you're allowing out? That's a question that.
I wanna say it is fifty thousand.
Are you sure of that, honey?
Mm-hmm, cuz I have the, I have the paper.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, I have the paper in my office, we found it. But we haven't gone out to spend anything crazy like that.
No.
You know, other than I think when we purchased the vehicles for the P G, but other than that, we have, you know, stayed. But then, well, yeah, we haven't done any spending. So, um, Arturo, you wanna add something?
No, Mary, too. Glad to see the gas.
Where's it?
Went down and it went up quite a bit.
And I don't know why.
Well, they were taking the cars home, that's why, I think, because they were driving to Tri-Cities.
Yeah, that too, there was, that was longer.
Enough of long ways.
Yeah, and our officers are now pretty much within a, like, twenty, twenty mile.
It's thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes?
Thirty, thirty mile, thirty minutes. That's the first thing.
Yeah, so I think it's a big difference. So. Anything else?
I just have a comment on the, uh, fifteen thousand dollars. If that change was in the last three years, cuz I don't think it was never that much.
I didn't either.
I think it was like fifteen or five.
No, it was five.
Five, okay.
I found a paper that was, it's a, I don't know, have you seen it? Have you seen it?
Sure did, yeah.
So, I don't know, we can go back and we can bring it, but I did find a paper. And actually, that was given to me by a former employee. So.
You didn't bring it with you?
No, I did.
Wouldn't be possible to. No, no.
Oh, yeah, I can, but not right, not today.
No, that's okay.
You said bring it round.
Anything else on that? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to G. Discussion of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven eighty-three, an ordinance, amended, uh, ordinance one zero zero seven, establishing Mapton City Hall office hours. So, um, we did change the hours back in twenty twenty-three, money? Was that the year we changed it back?
Um, I think so.
Yeah.
Basically? Been that long?
Yeah. So we changed them, uh, due to the fact that, um, staff was staying a lot and they were staying later to, um, do work, money, uh, taking, um, answering phone calls, uh, and doing other office duties that were not getting done during the day cuz they were so busy. So what we're doing was we decided to close City Hall at four-thirty to the public, but the office was still, uh, taking phone calls and doing work so they could get out at least by five fifteen, five thirty, the latest. But I was trying to push everybody out, hey, we're closing at four-thirty, get your money counted, and let's get out of here at least by five-ten, by fifteen. Um, I know, um, Sophie and Jerry had some issues this, was it this week or last week?
Friday.
Friday? Okay, you wanna add to that? And I mean, this isn't the only time that you guys have had that.
Yeah, there's been other times where just depending on the task, we try to delegate everything and we end up having to stay a little bit later than what we like to. Uh, we, we try to watch our hours as much as possible so we don't go over. Uh, just from my standpoint, if we were to be closing at five, that means the register and everything has to be maintained open until five, which would add an additional hour per person per week, estimating three people hourly, that's fifteen hours a week. A month, we're looking at sixty hours, depending on wages, that adds up over ten thousand dollars additionally per year, just to begin with.
Now, if they guys' hours are changed.
Correct.
To, to, to accommodate the extra, what, fifteen minutes a day, you said? No, you said an hour, oh, an hour a day?
An hour a day, give or take, depending, once we close, so get everything audited in the system. If there's any drawbacks or anything that we have to adjust or account for, if everything closed up, does not take fifteen minutes.
I don't, I just, that's what I understood you were saying. So it takes an hour or half an hour?
It can take anywhere between half an hour to an hour. So if we were to be closing at five, we would be staying till five-thirty or six o'clock daily, so that's one hour.
That's when you, that's when the, the mayor should, uh, switch you guys' hours around to accommodate, to estimate that extra hour that you may take.
Again, but again, since we would be closing till at five o'clock, there would be no way around that, because you have to still tell out, the money.
Maybe start an hour later.
But there, so there has to be two of us. That was the recommendation by.
But there, so there has to be two of us. That was the recommendation by. The state auditor's office, that there always be two people counting the money and signing for that money. That was the the policy or procedure that we implemented based off of their recommendations. To avoid any misconception that money is missing straight from the till. So at any given time, you're still at least paying for two additional people. And that is also not including the fact that anything over forty hours in a work week is considered overtime. So if you've got, if you've got them there till five thirty, six o'clock, that time is is overtime.
Not if you start in an hour later.
I.
No.
But if you want us there at eight, from eight to five. Then the one person who opens the till has to be the one that closes it. There always has to be two people to open the till and close the.
You only have one till? Do they each have their own till?
Well, technically, we're supposed to have our our own tills, but we don't have enough computers to. To have two tills.
Don't?
No. Not working computers.
We we have this ground around just to put my additional monitors just to connect and give it what, into what we have.
We don't have three computers up there in the front.
We have one computer in front.
One computer. What happened to the other one?
Jerry has one at his desk because he does, he does other jobs. And Sophie has one, and so does Marty. So we have, they each have a computer and there's one at the counter. That's where they're at. And if you think that that's bad, our police department also needs computers. And we're on a freeze, so we can't afford to buy anything right now without being questioned.
Yes, you need to ask.
No, I don't need to ask. I'm let, we're just, we're letting it, we're letting it roll. Because apparently, you know, you you have the way that we need to run the city. So I'm telling you, they're they're letting you know, we only have one. At the, at the counter, one, and you should see the line.
So maybe we needed another computer instead of spending three thousand dollars on. Would you guys buy the desk and the thingies? Five thousand dollars? Maybe we should invest it in a computer if that's what you guys needed.
Nope, we can invest in them.
I'd like to ask employees. How they feel the difference is. What's working better for you guys? You guys are the ones that do it. We're not, we're just. You know, you're the ones that actually have to take it on. So what they, what's your feeling towards all of it?
Towards what?
The way the hours are now or the way they were before? How do they feel? So the ones that work it.
The hours that you're working right now?
Well, of course, if you ask an employee, can I, can I get off at four thirty?
Does it work better with the citizens? How's it working with the people out here and not just?
That's, that's a different question, okay.
So I think that we've been doing it long enough. The citizens are already used to it. They know what time.
Citizens were complaining.
Well, I mean, citizens call and they're asked, hey, what time you close? And I've heard when this. Um staff says, hey, we're here till four thirty. Does it mean that we're not? I've met people on the way, when I'm going out and they're like, oh, I have my check. I'm like, if you trust me to get it, then we'll take it in right now. And if you want, you can, we can send you a receipt or you can come back and pick it up tomorrow. Or when you come in and pay your bill the next time, they'll have their receipt for you. You know, so people are understanding, they know. So, I mean, we've been doing it since twenty-three, we're now twenty-five. I think the residents are. Okay with the time now.
And the ordinance that was switched it back was done in twenty twenty-four and it was never implemented, right?
Money, because we didn't have the resolution, if I'm correct.
I don't believe all the telling you guys changed.
You guys did have the resolution.
I went, I went through them last week. I did not find a resolution where um the hours were changed. I I went through looking for.
Well, I feel it's funny, cuz I know, you know, that's her when she asked me the last time. It's maybe you guys don't have it, but it was, it was passed.
Oh, I looked online. I I looked on the website, so.
A lot of stuff don't get put on the website, though. Or didn't. I don't know if it's updated now. Remember, Marty, I did send it to you?
Um I'm, I think I remember it coming back sometime, but I don't, I would have to go back to email you anything.
Do we have a lot of citizens that challenge the the time of closure?
Our experience working there, no.
Would it be something that we might wanna put to them, like in a survey or just a questionnaire that you can put in the office and say? You know, how's it working for you? Would it be better if we go back or because? To me, it's affecting you and the citizens. That's who it's affecting whatever we're doing.
Yeah, like I said, I think that the citizens have been in the.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while, so I mean. Nobody's complained to me, you know. And um. I think that the hours are great the way they are.
You know, and we're not leaving at four thirty. You know, we're only locking the doors to count the money. We still are answering phone calls. Um assisting customers in that way and taking payments over the phone. Or helping people. Figure out how to do it themselves on the website.
Well, that's good.
Citizens I had is that they weren't able to go in there. Just at five o'clock.
Can you name how many citizens complained to you? How would you know? You're not here at that time. So how would you know that they complained?
Well, we did this back in two twenty-four is because of that. Citizens were complaining. They were standing in here complaining. They don't come anymore. There's nothing that's done with what they've asked.
But everybody is, they drop, and I know what she's talking about, so they mail it in. Or they put it in the Dropbox, or they go online and they pay their bill. So, that's, you know, they're they're being taken care of. And when they were coming in, they were coming in at two minutes before five. Or a minute before five.
I did see that, cuz I was there. I did see that.
So. And that's why we were trying to do the four thirty as well, so that way they can get money counted, they can get their. Um paperwork done, get their um phone calls answered, and get out of there in a timely manner. So. Diane, do you have a problem with it?
You know, they open the door for me sometimes or, you know, just to get my, cuz I always give you guys a number of money in it. Not as long as the citizens are okay. I mean, that's who need to plead, but. How about you, Arthur?
No. Okay, so I guess we're gonna just go ahead and read them as is from.
It's five o'clock. It was passed in twenty twenty-four.
I don't, I didn't see that. Did you see that? Um girls, did you see that in the?
They just said they didn't, but it didn't, but it was passed. If you go back to the to the meeting, the minutes of, I think of April twenty twenty-four, it was passed. Remember the ordinance said, buddy?
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead. We'll go ahead and um there's nothing else. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six thirty-seven. We're gonna go ahead and go and go ahead and go into the next meeting.